I think so, yeah.
I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting for the mayor and city of Tawnytown for the month of June and ask Councilman Wentz to lead us in the play.
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All are present except for Mayor Pro Tim Foster, who's attending a conference. First order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes of May the 3rd and May the 8th, regular meetings with corrections, and May the 18th with corrections, and June the 1st, special meetings. Anyone care to make a motion to approve one or all of those sets of minutes?
I move that we approve all as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Opposed.
I'd like to present a minority report on the May the 8th minutes. As a minority, I voted no on that, and I'd like this to be part of the record. I have the right to. May the 8th included a censure of me providing attorney-client privilege, and I think that is an unjust censure, and I want to give one of the clerk two.
What is this? I'm sorry. Is this on the docket?
It's under the minutes. You have on May the 8th. I voted against it just now.
I want to produce a minority report because I'm in the minority. No. He's passing out what he says is an alternate version of the minutes. You've just adopted what the official record is, three to one.
So just disregard them, is that what you're saying?
You can do whatever you want with it.
Well, it's a minority. I'm in the minority, and I have the right to file a minority report.
If you were on a court, you'd get to do that, but this isn't a court, so.
Councilmember's statement regarding conflict of interest on agenda items. Does anyone have any conflict of interest on any of the items that'll appear on the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Hearing nothing, we'll move on toward resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Our first resolution to approve is, or reject, you have that option, Resolution 2017-08, the water allocation for June. Anyone care to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
Sure.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. No carry. Next is ordinance 09-2017, a fiscal year budget amendment that will restructure the police salaries. And before we begin, I just want to make a comment on this. I've had an epiphany, I think. I was very concerned that this measure was rash and we were moving too quickly and didn't have all our information, and I still feel that way, but the fact still remains that based on the information that's presented, our salaries seem to be out of line. And if that be the case, and if the information that was presented is accurate, then we have no choice but to move forward this budget. May I encourage you to pass it? The real issue, in my opinion, resolves not the fact that the salaries are out of line, the fact that we didn't know they were out of line. This is a management flaw, and I need to find out where this began and who's responsible and deal with it from that end. I don't think we need to hold our police hostage because of that, so that's just my comment. Anyone care to make a motion to approve ordinance 09-2017?
Mayor, before you do, there's two different versions on your desk for that, and we should talk about that before you do it. I don't know who you want to talk about.
So I could talk about it because it was actually an amendment that I requested that we consider tonight. Basically, what this would do is it would not only restructure the police salary, but it would also give the 3% raises to the rest of city staff outside of the police structuring. It was the 3% raise that we had originally anticipated but decided not to go along with in the budget. Basically, my thinking on this was that it would take into account all of the concerns that all of us had on Wednesday night, and if you give me a minute, I can run into that real quick. So first of all, we want to demonstrate that, you know, any city employee who does, you know, a stellar job with their work, you know, receives the pay that they've earned. That's part of it with the 3% raise. Second of all, demonstrates that we are loyal to employees outside of the police department as well as with the police department. The next thing it does is that it allows us the time and the breathing space to be able to reexamine the salaries across the board. Mayor, I know Wednesday night, you had some concerns about the amount of time we would take to actually look at the salaries across the board. By passing that 3% amendment to the amendment to the budget tonight, that would give us that breathing space. At the same time, I know Councilman Wentz and Councilwoman Fuller and the rest of us were also curious about the salaries themselves across the board, the amounts. This would actually give us the ability to be able to look at those salaries across the board. Now, in addition to that, I know there was some discussion about whether or not we would do this in-house or whether we would take somebody as a third party to reexamine the salaries. That would also give us the breathing space and the ability to be able to discuss that at length. And so that's why I feel that the amendment to the police structure salary that I hope we will pass tonight will give us that breathing space and that ability.
Can I ask a question before we move forward?
We came to come to the same conclusion, so.
Can I ask a question before we move forward? The proposal that I thought was on the agenda for tonight was Proposal A, was presented at $139,000. That was the summary on this fine sheet paper, so is that... I would move that we adopt that proposal, and then there was going to be some consideration. A lot of discussion occurred about department heads having some authority to go over the salary structures with the city, so I would move that we just pass the police, which is the urgent one, and then if we want to at a later time amend the budget for the 3% pay increases.
Don, Councilman Vigliotti had a motion, but I was waiting for a second on that. But when you interrupted, is there anyone?
I didn't interrupt. I just asked a question.
I'll second Councilman Vigliotti's motion. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Now you can say what you said a minute ago.
Well, I was encouraging you not to put in an amendment to the budget to enact a 3% increase. What would be the cost of the additional 3%? Is that going to be voted on just now?
Yes, it's in the packet. I think it's about...
Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
I think it's about $36,000 if I'm correct.
Twenty-three.
I'm sorry, 23. I apologize.
Okay, that helps me.
Thank you very much.
It's a comparatively small amount. It allows the rest of the employees outside of the police department to know that we are interested in rewarding them for the hard, good work that they do.
And the subsequent discussion about this is not going to occur?
That's what's happening now.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Okay. Any other motions regarding that ordinance? My city manager is not here, of course, so I guess we don't have any city manager's report, but we'll certainly entertain questions if something's come up to get an answer for you when the city manager returns. Anybody have any thoughts on what Henry presented to us last Wednesday?
God bless.
How about the departmental reports? Anybody have any questions on those? Okay, let's move into the legal report. We were talking about public works agreements and letters of credit last Wednesday, if I recall, and you'll pick that up with us, I guess.
Yes, I left that with you to think about, and had some brief discussions with the staff on both of those issues, and have come to you with a plan of action, so to speak, which is really going to be a no action, but it's a little much to take on at one meeting for you to get what I talked about at that thing. And we feel that we really need to investigate it to give you something in writing anyway, at least with the public works agreements, because there's a lot of stuff to deal with. And we've had some staff discussions, but not in the detail we need. The letter of credit request, we're required to bring it to you. I mean, that's what we tell the developers. If they ask for it, we brought it to you. So to break this down, item number one, Creekside Letter of Credit. We don't think that you should try to pick and choose if you say, hey, we're going to take this line item and that line item, because that breaks down the entire flaw, because, as I told you before, all the line items would be considered. So the theory might be, let's put this off until next month and see what they do, whether they make any of the deliverables that they talked about that they were going to make this month. That might be a way to deal with this, so you really wouldn't have to take any action if you didn't want to. With the public works agreement, that is going to hold up the Meads Crossing development. They can adopt the one that they currently have, or we can talk about new provisions for a public works agreement. We are not in a position right now to give you what those new provisions would be, because we haven't had the time to do the research. The concern we have is that they're not going to move forward until they execute a public works agreement. So what we're asking for is if the staff comes up with recommendations, that we present them to the mayor, and if the mayor is okay with them, we can go ahead and negotiate the agreement according to that and then bring it to you for ratification. It's either that or you put off another month, and you'll be in July before we get an agreement.
Mr. Mayor? We discussed that the amount of the letter of credit, if I'm not mistaken, is $3.2 million.
I don't have...
And you said it was not just a bond, but they actually had to hold that cash in reserve. Did you say that on Wednesday? I thought you said that.
It is not a bond. It's a letter of credit.
It's a letter of credit. So I think, having gone through the Creekside Development and seen how good a job they did, that it would be appropriate and leave plenty of leverage for the town to go ahead, since they urgently requested we consider it, and give them $1 million back for a job well done. That gives $2.2 million of leverage to put in the sidewalk and the other items mentioned. And I think that we need to not be overly harsh in holding $3.2 million when they've done a relatively good job of completing the punch list but are stubborn about things like that sidewalk that I talked to others about. So I'm going to make a motion that we release the $1 million that was suggested on Wednesday and then discuss how to exert leverage at the July meeting with the remaining $2.3 million.
Anyone care to second that? Hearing nothing, motion dies.
If I could speak to that real quick, I think we cannot reward defiance. I mean, this letter of credit has been there for how many years? And the fact that they don't have it does not push them to do these things any faster. So by rewarding them for being defiant on these punch list items wouldn't make any sense. I mean, this is where we need to apply more pressure, not relieve pressure. That's how we get results.
It's obvious by the attitude to me that the developer is wanting this kind of action that's being proposed to relieve them of the burden of having to complete the work.
I agree.
And put the burden on the city. And I think that would be ill advised, but anyway, the motion dies because lack of second.
Thank you.
And if I could add, because maybe I haven't been clear, maybe that's maybe the thing, but let me say it a different way, and this is not to be impartial. I want to give you the jaundiced view from the city's point of view. Everything that they've done, everything that you drove out there and saw, was done and completed and motivated to sell the lots. They can't sell a lot until there's a base course down. They can't sell the lots until the streetlights are up. They can't do the lots until the sidewalks are up in front of it. Everything they've done and spent has been motivated to make their sales work, and their sales are done. None of the things that aren't lot-related were done. You could say they did the landscaping. That's not really true. The landscaping was a mess because they were supposed to landscape the individual lots that they sold, and they didn't, so they had to make up the trees somewhere. So they did that, again, related to selling lots. The sidewalk doesn't sell lots. The pump station transformer doesn't sell lots. The easements don't sell lots. The things that aren't related to their goal haven't been done. And that's the way to look at it from the city's perspective, that we said, you know, you haven't done anything that's for the public good at this point in time, only for your good.
Well, and even the trees, that wasn't an easy thing. You know, it was when they were supposed to put the trees on the lots, and those who lived there said, we don't want the trees in our front yard. So the first thing they did was come to us and want us to excuse them from doing the trees. And the city said, no, you have to do it. Bring us a plan of where you're going to put these trees. And they did, and that's the pressure that needs to keep going forward if we want this development to be completed as expected.
Mr. Mayor, before we finish with this topic, I had suggested to some this week that if you wanted to, let's say, get the sidewalk built across from the insurance company McDonald's up against that tight bank, you could just put it out on bids and ankle to the people that we... That there's a... You know, they hear these meetings that there's $3.2 million in being held, and if the bids came in higher than what it would really cost to do that, that would be an incentive for them to get busy and do it. If we were going to take it, since they've been delaying, and let a contractor do it and then take it out of their bond.
Why would we spend that money to do that?
Well, we could actually hire a person to put that sidewalk in and take it out of their bond.
I feel like we're letting them off the hook.
Again, why would we go to that expense to do that?
Well, it would provide... You say about putting pressure on. One of the ways to put pressure on, if the sidewalk real cost was $200,000 and our bids came in at $450,000, they'd get busy and do it.
Oh, okay.
That's an idea that I thought of this week that would put real immediate pressure on to get it done in the next 30 days if we would...
But we're still putting out money to make that happen.
It doesn't cost too much to get some bids in.
I'm not saying it costs a lot, but it's for us to just knuckle under with a developer and say, you know what, we'll just do it ourselves, and we just won't give you that money back. That's unacceptable. I mean, that gives us the look of we'll just knuckle under on anything that comes into the city, and they need to do the work that was agreed. This is not news to them. This has been discussed and agreed on years ago.
And think that we're already facing another developer who wants more drastic changes, and what message does this send to them? That you can do anything you want in the city of Tawnytown, just stick to your guns. That's all you got to do. They'll cave in.
No, I just think that if you do something like... The idea that I suggested, Mr. Mayor, you could get them to move in the next 30 to 60 days. If you are about to spend their money, three times their cost.
But to do that, we have to call the letter of credit, correct?
Yeah, that's an oversimplification of what could happen, and it wouldn't... 30 to 60 days is not realistic. The choice you have, if you want to go down any other road other than decrease it or wait, is call the letter of credit. That's a process. Then we'll have the money.
And that's a bell that can't be unrung, as you explained...
Right, I mean, so then you have the money. It's not as simple as going out to bid it. If it were that simple, they would do it. The problem is you got to have the plans, which we don't. It's their plans, and those plans haven't been approved by State Highway. They haven't been approved by the property owners, so you can't bid it until you get approved plans. And so in essence, if you took step one and got the money, step two would be design the sidewalk. So it is a process. It's certainly a viable option, but it is not a simple fix. It wouldn't be... That wouldn't be a 30 to 60 day fix.
Well, isn't it time to call the letter of credit? Have you been after this for months and years? Isn't it time to call the letter of credit?
What you would do if you want...
And have that cash so we can finish the things they're supposed to finish?
If you wanted to do that, if you wanted to exercise that option, you would direct that we take steps to do that, because it's like a contract where you have to give them notice saying, we intend to do this within X amount of days, and if you don't cure, then we're going to. The issue becomes they're not in a position to cure it, because you're going to say you didn't finish the sidewalk, and they're not in a position to do the sidewalk at that point. But you're right. You can issue a letter to them saying, you are in default of X. We intend to call the letter of credit. And then they're going to write back a letter saying, we don't... Please don't do that. Let's talk about what needs to be done.
That's right.
And we're back where we are right now.
That's my...
Except we threatened and didn't follow through.
You're exactly right, and maybe the discussion that you should, or whoever, needs to convey to the contractor, whether it's Jim Wipruck or Henry Rue, is that we've had a very serious discussion about calling the letter of credit, and that's going to be the next stop unless they get on the stick. That's the approach we need to take.
To spend your money.
That's simply... That's easy. That's what we brought it to you for, is not only did they refuse to reduce it, but they had a big discussion about how can they call the letter of credit.
Exactly right.
Yeah, the key is you can't threaten...
I suppose that'll be the biggest motivator of all.
I think that would be very...
Nobody wants their letter of credit called.
Right.
Okay.
So Jay, can I...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So can I ask, I mean, if we did decide to take this into our own hands, from the way I see, the danger is, is that if we did take a specific project or something into our own hands, then any developer in the future could say something like, oh, well, the city of Tawnytown is going to take care of X, Y, and Z, so we don't even have to worry about that at this point, because they'll just step in and take it from us. So it kind of goes off of what the mayor and Councilman Wentz are saying about knuckling under.
It sets the precedent we've been trying to get away from of the projects that are good for the public, and you saw how I categorized them earlier, get put off to the end instead of being done up front or in the middle or while we go. And then the thought is, the city wants it done so bad, they'll do it. And the issue that I've been trying to, like, let you read between the lines, but you won't, so I'll state it out there specifically, is if we go to these property owners and have to negotiate for the easements to do this, they want things from the city that we will have to negotiate for. If we're not involved in it, they can't negotiate with us for things. You want to know what things are. Access to different roads, approvals for different types of subdivisions, zoning of things, because those are two houses now, but they're in the middle of the commercial district. So you kind of got to use your thought and say, well, what would you do if you were the property owner and you all of a sudden had to get to deal with the city for something you wanted?
Right.
As opposed to a developer, which is why I keep saying we don't want to be that spot.
Well, we've probably talked about this long enough. I can't see any value in becoming a contractor and completing the work, but...
Should we put a deadline on calling the letter?
I'd be in favor of that.
I think you need to let us communicate your stern rebuke of their request. You're going to get more bites of the apple that way, because then you'll see what happens when we come back in July and their response, and then you have something else to do before you actually pull the trigger.
Okay.
All right, good deal.
Thank you, Jay.
All right, the public works agreement, we were going to wait till July, or what are we going to do with that?
Well, if we... If the staff had its recommendation that you would like... We would like you to authorize the mayor to approve any changes to the public works agreement, if we can work that out with them. Meaning that the mayor says we're not doing it, then it doesn't happen. If the mayor says it's good, we can work out an agreement and bring it back to you to be ratified.
The mayor's way of thinking right now is that the public works agreement we have is just perfectly fine.
I think it should stay the same it is.
Me, too.
Then we don't have to negotiate anything, and we can just go home. That's fine. We'd like that better, so that's fine until they hear that, and then they'll come back and talk to you all about it. There's some real... As I told you, there's some merit to the rationale that they're talking about, but it's complicated, and it doesn't...
Well, it's like I've said before, from day one, we're the ones that are doing all the giving. I'd like to see some of it come the other way, that's all.
We'll pass that on, saying that we're really not in a position to do it, and if you want to, then you can come back in July. If you want to sign the public works agreement you have, you can sign that. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's my take on it.
All right.
Wonderful. Let's move on. How about old business, the National League of City Sewer Lateral Insurance Program? Now, explain to me exactly what this covers one more time. I know it covers the line from the house to where?
Right now, it's the curb stop. There's a cleanout. There's supposed to be a cleanout by the curb, and that marks the demarcation between the city property, city-owned sewer line, and the rest of it is the lateral.
So the piece from the main to that curb stop coming in is ours?
That's my understanding from... And again, that's what I've been told. I don't know that. I can't visualize it, but... So from the curb stop to the house, if there is a problem with the lateral, that's what they would call that, then they could imply, if they had this insurance, to the insurance company to say, there's damage to the lateral. I don't know, because it's not my area to research, whether that means if there's roots in the lateral and they can have... Apply for their insurance because the roots clog things up.
You got to read the policy.
Or is it if the lateral collapses because some of the laterals are old or that type of thing? That's what it covers, and it's an extra premium upon... We are not involved. We're giving our good name to it.
Would anyone care to make a motion to support the National League of City Sewer Lateral Insurance Program?
So moved.
Your second.
Second?
Any discussion?
Just...
Oh, go ahead.
I was just... I'm sorry, Brad, do you want to go first?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Just a quick question. If it turns out that this program is not in the best interest of the city, are there any penalties for withdrawing from it? Are there any costs associated with withdrawal?
I haven't seen them provide a contract to you all yet, so my thought would be, if you're saying, yeah, we want to do this, we tell them, send us a contract, and then we find that out.
Okay.
Because... And I don't think that we'd come back to you with, here's the contract, what do you think? But obviously, we don't want any responsibilities at all. We want oversight.
Well, we should have an exit strategy if things aren't what they appear to be, that's all. So that's... I think that's the step, you know, based on an approved contract, we could do that.
Right.
All right, any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I'm opposed to it.
All righty. New business, monthly financial report. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? In favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. So carried. Accounts payable. Care to make a motion to approve the accounts payable for this month?
So moved.
Your second.
Second, that one.
Any question? Any discussion? Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we had a pickup truck purchase that needs to move forward, replacement 2004 service truck at the utility department. This is an item that's been budgeted, so if there's anyone care to make a motion to approve that truck?
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
I want to ask a question before we go. This is from Apple Ford. Why don't we have a quote from Kraus Ford? Why don't we have more than one quote?
We purchase our vehicles through the state...
This is through state, so we don't take bids on these.
You don't take any bids on these?
No, because it's through state contract.
Which is much less than what we can... We used to do it locally.
Well, the price is $40,101. I thought maybe our local Ford dealer would have a better price than that.
Now, historically, the local dealers, and we used to build from Wentz and Kraus for years, but, you know, historically, they're always significantly higher than the state contract, because the state's buying thousands of vehicles, and we're buying six.
The state's already done all the legwork for us.
Do I not take advantage of the lower?
Thanks for clearing that up. Thanks for clearing that up.
Okay.
I'll vote, I'll call a question on that.
Everybody, anybody in, all those in favor of purchasing the pickup, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. Maintenance contract, recommended for the blower service and the wastewater treatment plant. I would, I would hope we would have found out more information on that since Wednesday, particularly since Mr. Wilson had offered his input. He's, he's an authority in this regard, and after his remarks, I was kind of disillusioned with what that is.
I'd like to make a motion that we table for more information from what we requested Wednesday night from Henry.
Very good.
I'll second that.
All right, now your discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. Cleaning services bid. We have the cleaning services bid in the package. Do you, anyone care to make a motion to go with the low bidder for the cleaning services?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. All right, let's begin with council member reports. Councilman Fraser, what would you like to have?
A couple of months ago-
Public work out today.
A couple of months ago from the well, there was a, was a question about the Agora Ministry that I run, and the person read, scurrilous Facebook advertisement about our ministry. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit located 211 East Polver Street. And then there's been a series of requests for these 990s that I think, I don't know what the motivation is for that, but we file a 990N, which is the organization less than $50,000 a year, and it's nothing more than an Epost card. Now, I don't have to give donors or any, I don't have to fill out the long form for our 501(c)(3)'s. I want to give these two copies to Bradley Wentz and just say that we don't mind doing that and providing those to anybody who asks for them. We're up at the carnival. The reason I was kind of late for the meeting is because we've opened our booth for the fifth year at the Tonnytown Carnival. I encourage folks to visit the lunch hour from 11:00 to 1:00 each day. They open up that stand. You can pull in and get lunch. You can call on the phone and order lunches. And, and I'd like you to come up and visit our booths at the carnival, and I'm eager to get there even tonight. So I hope, I'm glad to see a short and succinct council meeting. I think we did great things tonight by giving an urgent Chief Tyler the money he needs to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wentz?
I don't have much to report from Planning Commission. We had a busy meeting and didn't get to any of the new things we wanted to discuss, but hopefully at the end of the month, we'll be able to discuss things like the sidewalk displays for downtown, which I know needs to be addressed and taken care of. But Tonnytown Lines baseball's wrapping up for the season, and my son's T-ball game was the last one for the season tonight. Carnival looks like it's coming into full swing, and good to see some life in the town again.
Yes, yes, indeed.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Joseph?
I know he used my full name. I'm in trouble. A couple of things this evening-
Your mother used that you were in trouble.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. A couple of things this evening. First of all, I want to congratulate Jared Marshall of our police department on making patrolman first class. I want to give kudos to the police department to, for participating in the torch run on June 7th to benefit the Special Olympics, where Corporal Schaefer's our liaison, and where our very own city attorney, Jay Gull, ran all the way from the park up to, where was it?
McDonald's.
McDonald's?
That wasn't very far. You didn't go up 140 this year? No, the other girl did. She went the whole way.
She went, wow.
That sounds like Bill Clinton.
No comments from the audience. Next year, I want the entire police department to do it with me.
There you go. That's good. That's good.
Now, Jay, the question is, what council member was out taking pictures of you and was not wearing a tie?
Not wearing a tie?
Not wearing a tie.
And there's no photographic evidence of such a thing?
Look on Facebook, you'll see.
I did see the book show.
He's making a book show.
And he had no tie.
It's not just a rumor, folks.
If it's on Facebook, it happened.
Yeah. Two other very, very brief things. Twice now, within the past month, our police department has rescued baby ducks from Route 140. And then I also want to say thank you to the police department for being at the carnival every night this week. I mean, to be out there in this kind of weather, it really says something about your commitment to this town, and I thank you for that. And I hope everybody does get out to the carnival, and I hope to see you all there. That's it.
And I don't have anything tonight.
Well, thank you. I, I have a couple items. I just, I first want to start by saying that it was a busy May. There was a lot going on. There was a, speaking of police, there was four or five different award ceremonies and recognition ceremonies and drug supposiums that had to do with the police. So there was kind of a, kind of a focus in May, and I attended not all of them, but four out of the five, I think I was able to go to, or three out of the five. So that was a, an interesting event, including the prayer breakfast for the sheriff at the beginning of the month and finding up with, finding up with an award ceremony at St. John's Governor Hogan was in town, middle of the month, and it was an opportunity for us mayors to meet with his staff and talk about things that are important to us and, are important to Governor Hogan, too, which is a, which is really the feeling I got. I mean, it was just, it's, it's good to, to know that you have a governor that is listening. Speaking of listening, Senator Cardin is coming to town on Friday, and he is also hosting the mayors and the commissioners for lunch. And I suppose we're going to tell him what we want. I'm not going to say too much about that, because I, I might say something I regret, so I'm not going to say anything about that. But I, I've accepted the invitation. I'm anxious to, to be there.
Where is that going to be held?
It's going to be held at the community college in the, I'm not sure where, president's boardroom or something, I don't know. But that, that's, that's coming up. And of course, coming up at the end of the month is, is the Maryland Municipal League's annual summer meeting, the summer convention. And again, it's an opportunity to network with 157 municipal officials, municipal officials representing 157 different towns throughout our state, and to kind of pick their brains on the opportunities that they have in their town and how they relate to our opportunities in our town. Always a high point of the summer for me, and I encourage those of you who are attending to make sure that you participate to the fullest. It's, it's time well spent, and it's, 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 again, you, you just don't, you just learn a whole lot. So, and it's, and you'll, you'll be able to really get a feel for the respect and the quality of folks that we have operating the Maryland Municipal League on our behalf. I think you'll, you'll, you'll be very impressed, so that's, that's coming up. And more, more, I'll report more on that after the conference, but again, it'll be a good conference. And I guess that's about all I have. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. Thank you, folks.